Call to order the Metropolitan Planning Commission of March thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And I do want to remind everybody to please silent your phones and maybe not the children, but the phones for sure. Um, we're a friendly group, so uh, we appreciate everybody coming down and then happy spring break and uh, we're in spring break season and so we have a lot of commissioners here. I'm pleasantly surprised, so um, thank you for coming. And then Lisa, remind us about the microphone. So I do want to let everybody know we've been having some issues with our microphones and it's important for us to have the microphones in order for public uh, record and so um, remind us Lisa about the microphones for the commissioners just so we know.
Sure, as a reminder for the commissioners, make sure when you turn on your microphone to only hit the button once. The button that you're looking for is there are two buttons on the bottom section of the microphone. You only want to hit the one on the right that looks like a little person speaking. You don't have to use the other one, just turn it on one time on the bottom, turn it off, try not to do any double tapping and uh, and we should hopefully be good to go. If not, Brett knows how to reset it, so, but let's try not to do it.
All right, thank you very much. And so uh, the next item for business is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, the adoption was sent out earlier, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next is item C, which is the approval of the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five minutes and those were also sent out earlier, is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it and the minutes are adopted. Next, uh, we take the council members as we see y'all come in and so I saw council member Webb, where, there's council member Webb. Do you want to speak now or during, yeah, come on up. Appreciate you coming down.
Wait, hold on just a second. Abby, can you, hold on, we'll get you. I just wanted to come up and say thank y'all. This Rivergate project, uh, the mayor's group has been working on it uh, for over a year now and we're just so excited and we just want to say thank y'all for looking at it and hopefully it'll go through and it's going to do a lot of good for the north side of uh, up there with Rivergate Mall and stuff. It's going to be a game changer for us and I just want to say thank y'all.
Thank you, Councilman, and just for the, the listening audience, that's uh, items number five A and five B. I mean fifteen A and fifteen B. I need to bring my readers. Um, thank you very much, Councilman, I appreciate you coming down. I didn't see any other council members. Next is items for defer, deferral or withdrawal, go ahead.
Our items for deferral or withdrawal tonight, starting on page three of your agenda. Item number two, twenty twenty four S P zero four nine zero zero one, five six four two Valley View S P. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number four, twenty twenty four S P zero six zero 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 one, sixteen zero nine Fourth Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April tenth meeting. Item number five, twenty twenty five S P zero zero five zero zero one, Martin and Merritt. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. Item number six, twenty twenty five S P zero zero seven zero zero one, one three nine zero five Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. Item number seven, twenty twenty five S P zero zero nine zero zero one, one zero zero four and one one zero four Cass Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April tenth meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number nine, twenty twenty four S, one fifteen zero zero one Monroe Park Phase One. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May eighth Planning Commission meeting. Item number ten, twenty twenty four Z zero six nine P R zero zero one. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April tenth meeting. Item number eleven, twenty twenty five Z zero two zero P R zero zero one. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. Item number twelve, tw- two thousand seven S P zero three seven zero zero three, Forest View Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number fourteen, twenty twenty five S P zero one six zero zero one, Vatson Homes Stewart Ferry, Stewart's Ferry Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. Item number sixteen, twenty twenty five S P zero two zero 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 one, three one eight seven Franklin Limestone Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number eighteen, twenty twenty five S zero two nine zero zero one Neely's Bend. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. Item number nineteen, twenty twenty five S zero, zero three seven zero zero one, Madeline Drive Platte Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. Item number twenty, twenty twenty five S zero three nine zero zero one, nine zero one and nine one one Hit Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh meeting. That concludes our deferrals and withdrawals.
Thank you, Maddie. And so commissioners, uh, and Maddie, make sure I get these correct as I read them off, but these are the items for defer or withdrawal. Items number two, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for defer or withdrawal, is there a motion? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it and those items are deferred or withdrawn. So now Maddie, uh, consent agenda, item F. Go ahead.
Items noted as consent, tentative on consent will be read aloud at the beginning of the meeting to determine if there is opposition present. If there is opposition present, the items will be heard by the Planning Commission in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So starting on page three of the agenda, item number one, twenty twenty three Z zero zero three T X zero zero one Downtown Code Amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page four of your agenda, item number three, twenty twenty four S P zero five five zero zero one Veritas Corner S P. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. On page five of your agenda, item number eight, twenty twenty two S two two zero 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 one, three eight six two Hudson Avenue. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. On page six of your agenda, item number thirteen, twenty sixteen S P zero four three zero zero seven Trinity Lane North Lights Block Three Amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number fifteen A, twenty twenty five S P zero one seven zero zero one Rivergate Master Plan S P. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number fifteen B, thirty eight seventy nine P zero zero seven Rivergate Mall PUD cancellation. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, item number seventeen, twenty nineteen S zero eight one zero zero four Fox Valley Subdivision Phase Two. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number twenty one, twenty twenty four Z one three five P R zero zero one. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. I will now run through all of our items on the consent agenda with their full caption as legal information. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Starting on page three of your agenda, item number one, twenty twenty three Z zero zero three T X zero zero one Downtown Code Amendment. This is a, an amendment to amend section seventeen point three seven of the Metropolitan Code of Laws to update the Downtown Codes Bonus Height Program and outdoor space standards and several minor housekeeping items. Staff's recommendation is to approve. On page four of your agenda, oh, sorry, that's actually, on page six of your agenda, item number thirteen, twenty sixteen S P zero four three zero zero seven Trinity Lane North Lights Block Three Amendment. This is a request to amend a portion of specific plan on property located at four forty Tony Road and a portion of property located at two four one two Old Matthews Road to rezone up, rezone a portion of S P to R eight and to revise the layout and residential unit count for block three to permit a maximum of seventy two multifamily residential units and ten single family lots. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number fifteen A, twenty twenty five S P zero one seven zero zero one, this is the Rivergate Master Plan S P. This is a request to rezone from S C R to S P zoning for portions of property located at one thousand Rivergate Parkway and Rivergate Parkway Unnumbered, located within a planned unit development overlay district to permit a mixed use development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number fifteen B, thirty eight seventy nine P zero zero seven Rivergate Mall PUD cancellation. This is a request to cancel a portion of a planned unit development on portions of property located at one thousand Rivergate Parkway and Rivergate Parkway Unnumbered within a planned unit, planned unit development overlay district. Staff's recommendation is to approve if the associated S P is approved and disapprove if the associated S P is not approved. On page seven of your agenda, item number seventeen, twenty nineteen S zero eight one zero zero four Fox Valley Subdivision Phase Two. This is a request for a final plat approval to create forty six residential cluster lots on a portion of property located at twelve oh one Neely's Bend Road Zoned Single Family Residential. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number twenty one, twenty twenty four Z one three five P R zero zero one, this is a request to rezone from R S twenty to C S A zoning for property located at one zero seven East Campbell Road. Staff recommendation is to disapprove C S A and approve C S A N S. And on your agenda, on page eight of your agenda, under letter H, other business, item number twenty five, to accept the director's report and approve administrative items. And that concludes.
Thank you, Maddie. Commissioners, these are the following items and Maddie, make sure I get these correct, uh, that will be passed on the consent agenda together. Items number one, thirteen, fifteen A, fifteen B, seventeen, twenty one and twenty five, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items to adopt on the consent agenda, is there a motion? Motion, second, second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it and those items are adopted. And so for everybody else, that leaves the two items to be considered tonight under public hearing, uh, hearing is items number three and number eight. And just as a reminder, uh, to everybody that's come down, some of you may be new to the commission, uh, coming down and testifying, some of you may not, some of you have been here several times, but this is how it go, we're all volunteers up here except for the staff, all the commissioners are, and so we really appreciate everybody being as professional as possible. Uh, we, um, and we appreciate that. And so how we do the public hearing is the staff will do the presentation, we'll open the public hearing, the applicant will have ten minutes and they can, um, use two of the ten minutes for rebuttal if they don't use it all. We'll take everybody in support first and everyone will have two minutes and you can state your name and where you're from, you don't have to do your exact address, we just, for safety reasons, and then, and then we'll take all of the folks in opposition. Um, same thing, two minutes, uh, the timer is right here for when you're speaking and then, um, the applicant has a two minute rebuttal if they have enough time left. We'll take the council member if they're here, um, and then we'll close the public hearing and that's when the commissioners, uh, deliberate on the item. So we do appreciate everybody coming down, we're a friendly group, I promise, most of the time. Um, and so we'll go ahead and get started with item number three.
Dustin Shane, Stat Planner, item three is the Veritas Corner S P. This is a request for a preliminary S P for twenty multifamily residential units. Our recommendation is approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Current zoning on the site, it's single family residential, R S seven point five, proposed to be a specific plan. It's in the T four urban neighborhood maintenance policy, um, directly across the street from transition. This is, uh, the site plan presented, you can see the, the apartment, two story building there, uh, courtyard in the center, parking, um, in the rear off the alley which will be improved. So this is for twenty multifamily units, um, stacked flats form, these are one bedroom units, so it actually introduces some, um, diversity of housing typology not usually seen, um, in this neighborhood. Uh, the building is shown, partially wraps a courtyard which opens out onto Veritas and activates that, um, frontage. Height is limited to two stories, um, access is taken off the alley in the rear, all access will be from the alley and that alley will be improved along that back frontage. Um, sidewalks are shown on both street frontages, um, per the local street standards, uh, there's a stormwater feature shown between the building and the sidewalk on the Veritas side. Um, we've had conditions in there for pedestrian access to those front units along Veritas. Uh, parking will all be surface parked and it will be, um, accessed off the alley. We have a condition in there that they won't exceed the U Z O maximums for parking here because it's in the U Z O. Um, there's a ten foot landscape buffer along the western property line that includes a wall and plantings per, uh, a condition that we have and then the, the dumpsters in the back will be screened as well. Um, so looking at the policy, neighborhood maintenance, that policy calls for maintaining urban, uh, moderate to high density development patterns, but does expect some change over time. So, um, this, this here is a contextually appropriate example of neighborhood maintenance density, um, it's on a policy seam, um, we're getting that alley infrastructure in the back which can, um, help, uh, alleviate some safety concerns on the, on the street frontages as far as access and conflicts with pedestrians. The height is contextual, the, the policy calls for not ex, to not exceed three stories, um, this is limited to two stories because that's, um, mostly what's in line in that area, two story buildings. Um, policy calls for minimizing the visibility of parking, the parking's all in the rear. Policy calls for connectivity, um, as I said, they're building out that alley in the back. Policy calls for maintaining, um, spacing between buildings, so they're doing that buffer on the west side, but then they're also maintaining that, that contextual setback, um, that's found on Veritas there in the front. And then the policy talks about the edges of, of the policy and corners being sites for potentially greater intensity, um, and we see that here, we're, we're on the edge of the policy adjacent to transition, there's a, another two story flats building just across the street that would mirror this, that's been existing since the seventies. Um, you're at an intersection of two local streets and then you've got an alley that's now going to be built out in the back, so you've got three different edge conditions that, um, would seem to, to allow the, the neighborhood maintenance policy, the density be on the upper end of that policy. Um, so our recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. And so commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant here? Hello, you have ten minutes and you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and staff. I appreciate the opportunity always to speak before you. Um, that was a great explanation of everything that, uh, planning has looked at as far as to ensure that this meets your policy. Uh, when someone comes to my office, that's the very first thing I look at, I look at policy, I look at policy first. And this property and its location across the street from a similar use at an intersection, it seemed like it fit. So the second call I make is to the council member, to make sure that, you know, we're heading in the right direction. In this case, we provided the council member with a plan, she was solidly on board with this, I mean, you know her history and, and what she feels like about, uh, her council district and providing opportunities for people to live affordably and provide density. I know she's in the process of, of actually, uh, upgrading large portions of her district to allow more density. So that's the second thing we do. Although she told us that she supported this, she obviously wants the, the planning commission to be involved and she would appreciate the support of the planning commission. So, uh, and most council members feel that way. So, uh, the plan was presented, presented to the planning commission's staff and the plan was actually showed a building along the frontage, most of the frontage was just building. Um, staff gets together as, as they normally do, you know, one head's better than, I mean, ten heads is better than one, I don't know how many people attend these meetings within the staff, but staff gets together and they, they really brainstorm this and they come up with great, great ideas. I would say over the past year, on every S P that I've done, it's been improved by input from staff. Staff's looking at what the council member wants, what the community wants, what we want, and they have the ability to sort of work all that together and that's exactly what they've done here. So the building that fronts on Veritas actually has less massing at the setback than would be even adjacent properties because the building is just sort of a U shape and so the massing along the street is probably less than the massing at the setback, uh, adjacent, on adjacent properties. So it's created this really nice courtyard that actually looks across the street to this other very similar development at this prominent corner. Uh, there's no access off of Sainton or Veritas, it's all accesses from the rear, from an alley from the, from the rear, which is something that N dot and, uh, staff had also recommended to be done. And so I think that greatly increases the, uh, the, 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 the nicety of the project and probably improves safety tremendously. So, um, that's the process that we went through, staff, uh, appreciate again their help, very professional of, of what they do and very helpful. And in this case, you have a plan that is, I talked to the council member today, um, she's been having some area wide community meetings talking about, you know, what she would like to see in the district. She's seen a lot of change there, a lot of businesses moving in, uh, she's excited about what's going on, she's excited about the project, I wish she was here. Um, but anyway, I appreciate the staff as usual and, uh, hope that you'll, uh, follow the staff's recommendation on approval of this. I'll hold a couple of minutes just in case a question comes up that I need to answer, but I think it's been very well presented, so thank you very much.
And Mr. Dale, what is your name? Did you give us your name?
Sorry about that. So I'm Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates, five sixteen Heather Place, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal for you. All right, anyone wishing to speak in support? Make sure, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, welcome. Appreciate you coming down. And state your name and, I'm getting the clocks right there.
Thank y'all for having me today. Um, hello, I'm Heath Mansfield, owner of a property along Sainton Street. Um, I, along with twenty five other residents, other than a petition that I have here, have signed to be in opposition, uh, to this current rezoning of this to an S P. My biggest complaint originally was the access point being on Sainton Street because I do believe that's where it originally was. Now that it's in the unapproved alley, I'm not as opposed to the access point because that, I believe that was going to cause a lot of issues. Um, the proposed development is incompatible with the existing R S five zoning, which you're aware of right now, um, it's predominantly single family homes around it, a twenty unit multifamily complex would disrupt the established character of our neighborhood and create significant aesthetic and functional conflicts. Um, the pro, property across the street from it is a multifamily apartment. Um, I saw in the public comments that the owner of that building wrote in support of this building. Um, the apartments directly across the street are in a commercial zoning, unlike the proposed properties, which is obviously R S seven point five. Um, the development at five one seven Varata Street also backs up on the other side to another, uh, a buffering of industrial, larger commercial properties on that side as well. Um, there's a reason that the parcels along Varata Street where the proposed development is are zoned R S seven. Nowhere along Varata Street on this side are medium to high density uses that are like are proposed right here. It's predominantly single family and this development would be surrounded by single family and I don't believe it would conform to the current neighborhood. Please do not approve the zoning changes, as I said, I am, twenty five other neighbors in the area have wrote in opposition of it. Thank you.
Yeah, you can, uh, give, do you have the names, we can give them to the, to the staff. That way we get it for the record. Thank you. And, and if, if you're missing some, you can send it, send it to, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, rebuttal? Two minutes.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad that, uh, the access was removed off of Sainton and so that probably, you know, voided some of the people that maybe, um, had some concerns and I'll just repeat what staff says. So, you know, you have neighborhood maintenance, you have T three neighborhood maintenance, T four neighborhood maintenance, this is urban and so this is an urban neighborhood maintenance policy which is expected to have change over time. And at this intersection, which is a fairly prominent intersection, if you're going to introduce something that, you know, you don't have, this is the location that you would do it. Although there's a similar development across the street, this would be the location to insert, um, a different housing type that's needed in this particular area and the council member acknowledges that. And so we would hope again that you would just follow the staff's lead on this as appropriate use at this location and, um, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I do not see the councilwoman, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner, I see you want, well, you know, the vice chair is not here, so I, I look left and then I go right. You know this commissioner. You recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The question I want to ask, see, the property across the street has a fence in front of it, would this be encompassed with the fence or just be open?
There's not a fence shown on the plan at this time.
And so it'll have a courtyard and, and so the access will be through the alley?
That's right, yeah.
And the parking would be in the back?
That's right.
Okay. I have no questions.
And any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to address the, I guess, the conversation about density, um, and it, this being in an urban context, um, I'm hearing about the existing multifamily apartment across the street, sounds like it's over fifty years old, however. Um, so when it comes to context, that seems to be the main reason why, um, we're thinking that this will fit into this area, but can you talk about how it addresses the context to the other neighbor, I guess, the single family housing?
Yeah, so we, that, one of the things is the height, a lot of the build, a lot of the homes along this street are two story and this S P limits this building to two stories, so it's not going to be towering over the other homes. Uh, you've got a buffer there on the west side where it does, it gets closer to the property line, but not even really that much closer than the, the neighboring, uh, next door neighbor. And then those front setbacks are also, um, largely contextual with what's, with what you see along that, that street frontage there.
And was there any like neighborhood meeting regarding this to get any sort of feedback? Or any options explored for lesser density?
Um, I, so, um, I, I don't know about neighborhood meetings, Roy can, uh, Mr. Dale can answer that. I will say that neighborhood meetings are not required as part of the zoning process. Um, so, uh, and, and the plan that came in, as, as was mentioned by the applicant, um, had the same number of units, but was a different, um, layout. Um, the, if you think about the building as it's, as it is shown now and sort of flip it and put the entire long wall along the main road, that was what initially came into us with an internalized courtyard, um, adjacent to the parking. And so staff, one of the things in work and looking through how to transition this or how to make it appropriate for an urban neighborhood was to flip the building, break up that massing along the main road, pull back the majority of the building so that it's more in keeping with the rhythm and the scale along the street.
Mr. Dale, uh, we were asked if, uh, the commissioner asked if you had a public meeting.
So, and, and talking to the council member today, she's had two community wide meetings, which this was also discussed, uh, in addition to the mailings that went out twice, she's not heard any opposition to this, that's what she told me today and I'm just speaking for her, so, but that's what I know.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Allen, is that, answer your question? Okay.
Yes, it is, thank you.
All right, any other discussion, commissioners? Will need a motion, is there a motion? Somebody make a motion, Commissioner Smith?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, plan with conditions, disprove without all conditions.
That's a proper motion, is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it and it's adopted. All right, that leads us to item number eight. Dustin, you're up again, all right.
Item eight is subdivision at thirty eight sixty two Hudson Avenue. It's a concept plan for thirteen residential cluster lots. Our recommendation is to approve with conditions. Zoning is zoned single family residential, R S fifteen. Zoning is zone, single-family residential RS fifteen. Um, so this is a cluster lot subdivision. The code was amended in twenty-twenty-two and it replaced cluster lot with conservation and then later compact, two, two options. Um, this application was submitted before that change was finalized and so we review it under the regulations that were in place at the time of submittal. Cluster lot, um, subdivisions require the creation of common open space, uh, preservation of natural features. Uh, the maximum lot yield doesn't change. It, it's fifteen. Um, they're requesting thirteen, thirteen lots. Um, lots can be reduced in size though, the equivalent of two zoning districts, um, down, in this, in this case, down to seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, and if they abut traditional RRS subdivisions, um, then they have to provide buffers along those, those boundaries, which they're doing. Um, open space is required at a minimum of fifteen percent for cluster lot subdivisions. This one's providing forty-two percent. Um, recreational facilities are required above twenty-five lots, so this does not require one. Um, so we go to the subdivision regulations that have standards for specific transects. This is in a T-three transect, um, suburban, so we look at chapter three of the subregs. Um, there's an existing structure on the site that I, I will point out is not any local historic overlays or marked as worthy of conservation by historic. Um, this is the, um, subdivision as it's laid out with, uh, a road. Hudson is on the right-hand side of your screen. The road extends up and then up, up a hill, heading in a cul-de-sac, and then there's a stubout to the northeast for future connectivity. You see the thirteen lots there. Um, so this is a major subdivision because there's two new public roads proposed. Um, chapter three also requires us to apply the hillside development standards because there are steep slopes on this site. Um, there are three lots that have slopes of greater than twenty percent within them, so those will require, uh, greater scrutiny at building permit as critical lots. Most of the slopes are in the northwest corner, um, outside of the lots. There's one lot, lot six, that has slopes of greater than twenty-five percent. And so because of that, the code requires us to put the building envelope outside of those twenty-five percent slopes. And that's because of the way the slope falls relative to the street. There's different requirements based on that. Um, chapter three, look, going through that is seen in your staff report. All of the standards are met. Um, there's no compatibility analysis required because the lots are addressing a new street. Um, the zoning regulations for RS seven point five, minimum lot size and so forth are all met. Um, the cul-de-sac and the future stubout roads have been looked at by NDOT and FIRE and meet those requirements. Um, NDOT has also confirmed with us that they've looked at the site distance requirements on Hudson for visibility, um, and found those to be, um, within the regulations. So our recommendation is approve of conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dust. And before we get started, we'll have our, uh, commissioners, good time to remind everybody that this is, uh, subdivisions are different than zoning and if our legal counsel will just remind us the difference for us and, and the audience.
Sure. For the, um, for the zoning, of course, you're, uh, making a recommendation to council, uh, but subdivisions are within your jurisdiction and you apply the criteria that, um, have previously been adopted.
Thank you. And so we'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing as the applicant in the room. Come on up. Welcome and state your name. And you have ten minutes and you can save two of the ten minutes if you don't use it.
Yes, sir. Uh, CJ Merle with six-one-five Design Group, one-five-one-seven Hung Club Boulevard, Gallatin, Tennessee. Uh, thank you commissioners and staff, uh, for your time tonight. Um, here representing my client on this item, uh, as Dustin said and did a very good job explaining, uh, this is a by right request. Um, we, we actually had started with fifteen lots on this. It has been reduced down to thirteen. We've worked extensively with staff to make sure that we adhere to all zoning code requirements and subdivision regulation requirements. Um, you may be wondering why it's taken so long to get to this point. Uh, turn the middle of this, there was a changing guard with, uh, with council and this, this area was redistricted as well. So we wanted to give the second council person an opportunity to vet the project and make sure that we were moving forward in the proper manner. Um, we agree to all of staff comments, uh, and happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you. We'll save two minutes for, for your rebuttal. Is anyone in the room wishing to speak in support? In support? Seeing none? Anyone in opposition? And if the opposition will line up, that way we can, uh, take you all and you'll be ready to go. And, uh, we appreciate you coming down. And you can see the timer here and we appreciate you guys coming down. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name's Sean Trainer. I live at four-zero-zero-two Hudson Ave. Um, there's a lot of neighbors here with us tonight. Um, we are in, um, opposition to this mainly because Hudson is a really beautiful street. Um, it might just be a street, but, you know, it's, it feels like a neighborhood. We named our dog Hudson. We, we love the street. Um, and part of that is it sits on a really big hill and it has a beautiful view of, um, kind of the valley, but right where this street is, um, it's on top of the hill and it's a giant blind spot. We have problems with traffic already. Um, and then the street would come down like on, like a, another giant hill. They put speed bumps in, but they haven't really helped. People still fly down. We walk all the time on the street. Um, just the thought of fifteen more houses in that, um, it just seems like it's going to have a lot more congestion, um, with fifteen or thirteen houses, maybe two cars per house. You know, it's almost thirty cars on the street and that being the only way. And I think that's going to be a problem. We started a petition and got thirty-one names on it. Um, everybody who lives on Hudson, um, not everybody could be here tonight, but, um, we would really like if you could take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can give the, um, is that the list of names? Yeah, give that to the team. Thank you. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Uh, my name is Kai. I live on Hudson as well, pretty close to where this development's going to be. I moved in about five years ago. Before that, I'm sorry, I moved in about ten years ago. I lived in a trailer by myself and got my act together over some time and I was able to build a house. Before I built the house, I noted that, um, it was a fifteen thousand square foot minimum in order to build a house on the street. So that was across the street from me. They had three hundred feet deep lots. We have two hundred and fifty feet deep lots on our side of the street. You really couldn't tell the difference with fifty feet. And so I pleaded to you guys to allow me to split my lot as some others have been dead, done, so that I could build two homes and make a little back on this investment. Um, at the time you said no, which I understood, but your reason for telling me no was that this neighborhood is to give the appeal of large lots. It's to, to be scenic. It's to have nature and deer and raccoon and fox, which are all there in abundance. And if, I believe that if we approve this, it's, it's clustering our neighborhood too much. It's adding to, it's taking away from the appeal of the large lots. It's taking away a lot of habitat for animals and I don't think a lot of people in our street are into this at all. So appealing to you guys to listen to the people behind me and maybe help us out a little. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, come on up.
Hi, um, my name is Steffi Cruz. I live directly across the street. I brought prompts because I'm, you know, to keep on track. Um, this is the house that they want to tear down. It might not be historically significant to a committee, but it's historically significant to me. It's right across the street from my house. This is my driveway. I exit right across from the drive of three-eight-six-two Hudson. Um, when I exit, I can't see who's coming over the hill. I understand that NDOT has approved this, but it's very dangerous. Um, we have teenage drivers. They just, my oldest just got her permit and I have five more after that. So fifteen years of drivers, you'd learning to drive on this hill and you're talking about putting an intersection right here. Um, the view from the development would be like this. Even if you remove the rock that's on the lot, you still have neighboring lot that's elevated that you can't see past. This is what it would look like instead of that beautiful farmhouse, or at least this is my artistic rendition of what it would look like instead of that beautiful farmhouse. Another blind hill, two blind hills for teenage drivers. Sorry that I'm shaking. I'm really nervous about speaking in front of you. Thank you for your time. I'm also nervous about water pooling. We've built a rain garden to help with, um, drainage issues in our yard, but if you remove all these trees, think about all the water that's going to flow downhill. This is the very tip-top of the hill. We have so many neighbors with ditch problems right now. Rainage, water's getting into people's basements. Water's already getting into garages from other developments. This would add to that. If you remove all this rock, this is rock, like literal rock they'll have to hove and shove out and tunnel a road through, it could mess with the foundation of the neighboring house. And over time, the earth could, could shift and no one would be there to help that homeowner out. So please vote against this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down. Welcome.
Hey, thanks for, uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jake Liniger. I'm a resident of Hudson Avenue. Um, I, my wife, along with many of our neighbors, are deeply concerned about the proposal to add this new street at the top of an already dangerous blind hill. Um, we've got safety concerns. First and foremost, this proposal, uh, significantly increases the risk of accidents in an already hazardous area. Our street has multiple blind spots and hills that make visibility difficult for drivers, pedestrians alike. Adding another intersection at the top of a blind hill is a recipe for disaster. Additionally, cars regularly park along the street, forcing drivers to swerve around them, often right into these blind spots. Um, adding more traffic is only going to make the situation worse, increasing the likelihood of collisions, injuries, and even possibly fatalities. Uh, traffic and community impact, this new road will not only make our road more dangerous, but it's also, it will also increase congestion and disrupt the character of our neighborhood. Many of us chose to live here for its quiet residential feel and we feel this change will negatively affect our quality of life and potentially lower our property values. Uh, we also have environmental concerns beyond safety risks. This project will require tearing down a large portion of untouched forest, a green space that serves as home to wildlife. Nashville made a pledge to be one of the greenest cities in the country. Destroying this forest contradicts that commitment and pushes more animals out of their natural habitat while reducing the tree coverage that helps with air quality and stormwater management. Um, I believe we have better alternatives, so we understand the need for infrastructure improvements, but we believe there are better solutions that won't create newer safety hazards or destroy part of our environment. In conclusion, I urge the planning committee to reconsider this proposal in light of the safety risks, environmental concerns, and negative impact on our community. There are smarter and safer ways to improve our infr- infrastructure without compromising the well-being of residents, children, and local wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Name's Leroy Bugs. I live at three-eight-one-one Hudson Avenue. I'm here with the neighborhood because the, the added traffic is going to be a problem. I can understand that. But I'm basically here to let you all know what the last major project on Hudson Avenue caused for me personally. If you open things up to my right, all the water's coming down the hill toward me, and that's what we're going to do again up at thirty-eight sixty-two or whatever this is. My basement is flooded right now from June third, twenty-twenty-four. It hasn't been usable since then. Right now it's dug up on all sides with a backhoe to try to seal the basement, make the whole foundation stronger. Problem is, I have water coming from my left, water coming from my right, and the new building, the new building is on the right now, but the, the last new building right here, all of its funnel toward me. So I know what, uh, the new person's issue is going to be like because I'm suffering from that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Josh Cruz. I live across the street from the new street. I'm at thirty-eight sixty-one Hudson. Um, I have three concerns. Uh, one is that, uh, my front yard will be the emptying trough of the new street, so I'll get the water. I'm also worried about runaway or iced vehicles who lose control because it's just gravity and no barriers until you hit my house. The second one is, is that on this hill, if you pull out at the intersection to the right, you can see, but to the left, a sedan disappears as he climbs the hill. The sedan also can't see under that curve part what's at the top of the hill. And my third concern is that thirty-eight sixty-two Hudson comes up right to the road high and it'll need to be cut down to make the road. But that will leave escarpments on the left and right, which also create a blind issue. When you, when you lower for the road, the neighbor's hill is now also another blind issue. So please oppose and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Greg Merrick, also, uh, own and live on Hudson Avenue. I sent an email to you all. Hope you had an opportunity to read that. I won't go over all that again or anything that my other neighbors have gone through, but I will amplify some of those things. Drainage is, is an issue, uh, and that is at the, uh, pinnacle of Hudson Avenue. And although I saw that staff had taken into account, uh, the drainage issues for the subject lot, uh, that will have impact, or I believe it will have impact, uh, amongst the lots that are downstream for that. Glad to see that NDOT had taken a look at the site distance. The one thing about Hudson Avenue is it's one of those streets that does not have any sidewalks. It's on a pretty sharp, steep slope. So off the side of the road, you're down this way or down this way into a ditch. So if you're doing any pedestrian walking, it's only on the road. So traffic impact does further impact that. The other thing from me email was, uh, didn't have a public hearing. You took care of that. Thank you. Appreciate it. Do wish you to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Edgar Arkey and I live also in Hudson Avenue. All my neighbors already said more than, you know, a handful of problems that we have. But you see in front of you guys, somebody that walks the street every single day, twice with my dog. I've been, almost been killed by a lot of cars that they're going through the road because they don't see us. Going down, they don't see me going, going up and going, it is, it is just bad. Two, my house has been flooded. Three times. We bought the house in twenty-seventeen. We didn't have any problems until we started getting neighbors doing construction. And now, since twenty-twenty-two, every single time there rains, it is flooded, the basements of the neighbors to the left, no, sorry, to the right, to the right. And, um, the traffic is just being crazy. Is, imagine putting thirteen more houses with all the cars that they're going to come in, it's going to be more problems. And again, I almost got killed several times, even though there is right now a construction right, mm, two houses down from this project. And, uh, the guy, when I was, when I was right next to the, 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 uh, the mailbox and he saw me with a almost, with a semi, he pulled over and he says to me, "Well, you need to get out of the street." So I oppose. I don't want this to happen and, um, I don't want to be killed. Neither my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Summer and I live on Hudson. Um, the proposed lot that they're building all these homes would be right behind, or almost right behind our home. Um, I live there with my daughter. She's four. And then my husband. Uh, we used to live closer to Gallatin, but we moved to this area because it's somewhat quieter, right? And there's lots of natural beauty. So it's, has that feel of you're like you're in the city, but yet your daughter has that experience of feeling like they're more in nature. We have lots of big trees. Um, we have boxes that come around our house. We have a, a family of deer that come through right beside our house and, um, raccoons and just lots of natural beauty. And I'm very concerned about where these animals will go when they start cutting more trees down and clearing these lots. And, um, and then obvious concerns of traffic. My daughter has school. She goes to a little camp that's right down the street from us and we actually walk her to school, um, and back. And we already have a lot of traffic as everyone has said, but this will make it even more traffic. We don't have sidewalks. We have lots of hills. Um, so I'm concerned with the safety of me and my daughter and, um, the neighborhood in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll make sure we get everybody that wants to speak. All right? Seeing none? Two-minute rebuttal. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, two-minute rebuttal.
Yes, sir. Uh, only two things that I'll add is, or three things actually, is, uh, from a site distance standpoint, at, um, at Hudson, we do tie in at the very top of the hill. Uh, worked with NDOT to, and provided an exhibit to staff. The speed limit on the road is twenty-five miles an hour. We've shown that we can meet the site distance. Uh, you're actually required to meet the site distance for a thirty mile per hour, uh, street. We've shown that and you can actually get more. Uh, the second thing is, is that the majority of this site actually falls towards the northwest corner of the site and all and all the stormwater will exit the site at that point. And then, as Dustin said at the very beginning, we're required to have fifteen percent open space, and we're, we're showing forty-two percent. Happy to answer any other questions y'all may have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And the council, I didn't see the council member here, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Smith, you want to go first?
Thank you for the neighbors for coming out. Appreciate your input, and I hope the, the developer will work with you on addressing specific concerns. I think as far as stormwater goes, I have complete faith in our stormwater department. They are very rigorous and comprehensive. And I think that they will develop a, a, a good plan and, and not intensify any problems. Hopefully, it will make it better, but at least will not intensify current problems on the street, which does seem a little tough. I hope the developer will work with NDOT on trying to get some speed calming measures, whether that's some blind drive signs, more speed bumps, a stop sign. Something there would probably be helpful. I don't think that's something we can mandate, but I'd, I'd really encourage you to try to, try to do something to impact that. On the other hand, I think as legal mentioned, we, this is not a rezoning. It's by right. We are supposed to apply the specific subdivision criteria, of which it seems like they've met everything. They have a by right of fifteen lots. They're asking for thirteen. By right, they're supposed to leave fifteen percent open space, shows about forty, forty-two percent. And I don't believe that really there's any legal criteria. They're, they're not asking for any variances or exceptions for us to turn this request down. So I'm, I'm in favor of the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Counsel A.D., you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I, I do have a question about the stormwater conditions. In the report, it says stormwater reviewed and approved with conditions, but I didn't see any conditions related to stormwater, and maybe I'm just missing them. So if you all could speak to that.
Yeah, at the concept plan stage, like where this one is, they do kind of a look, an overview. They check if there's physical space for all the improvements that they're going to have them do when they do that engineered final site plan. And as they're showing with all the, the open space and in that northern corner, they're going to have ample room to meet the regulations at the, at the time of that final site plan.
Okay, and that's just related to the back of the property. Is there anything, I guess, on the front of the, where the units are built towards the front? And maybe I'm missing it, but is there anything in regards to the stormwater?
They're, they're showing the bulk of their infrastructure on the back end, back there, because of the way the property slopes. They are going to show the gutters that are required on all new public streets up to Hudson right there, so that, that will be a fully improved street per NDOT standards, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll need a motion. Counsel A.D., you want to make?
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions. And it doesn't have it without all conditions. Motion to approve with conditions.
That's proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Oh, Commissioner Henley.
I just want to note my recusal for the record.
Yes, because you showed up late for the hearing. Thank you. So there's been a proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and it's adopted. So we appreciate everybody coming down. Thank you very much. And now we are on to other business, historic. Commissioner Smith.
No update. We haven't had.
Okay. Commissioner Henley, Parks?
Thank you, Chair. Matter of privilege, I have the mic. Would like to apologize for all in attendance for my tardiness, but I do have an update from Parks. We did have several presentations at the recent Parks Board meeting. Again, the, the extensive amount of work that's been.
Hold on one second. If everybody could take the conversation, if everybody could exit since we're still in the meeting, I apologize for that, but we appreciate it. And it's nice to have all the kids with us, spring break. Felt like I was at church. All right.
No, so just wanted to highlight again the extensive and, and great work that was done by our, our planning staff related to the Bill Mead Highlands design and mobility study. It still has a lot of legs at the Parks, Parks Board meeting. And we did have a presentation, and again, just wanted to communicate that that, that good work is being carried forward.
Thank you, sir. Executive Committee, just watch the calendar. Make sure you let everybody know that if you can come, and we appreciate that. I don't have anything else on the executive report. Lisa, I don't have anything else. But what about Director Report? Any, any update?
Stand-in only. I just, Lucy wanted me to make sure that you all were aware of some ongoing outreach work that the department has been doing in regards to the housing and infrastructure study. As a reminder, we are working on that study at the request of the Metro Council. And this week, the team wrapped up a series of six community conversations. Our own commission member, Councilmember Gamble, was present at several of those meetings. We had really great turnout at all of the meetings. We were across the county in different locations. We had really great turnout. We had really great lively discussions at all of those meetings and got a lot of feedback from the community members. And so we're excited to move into the next phase of the study with all of those comments sort of at top of mind as we move forward. So that's the update on that, and we'll keep you posted as we work through our draft recommendations and the next steps. There'll be a second phase of community engagement, but we have just, we've completed the first phase. And just big thanks to Greg Claxton and the rest of the team. We had a lot of support from all of the department to help run those meetings smoothly. And so I think they turned out really well. So that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. And I, I do want to say I really appreciate Councilmember Gamble, before we recognize her to speak, but she's always a really good communicator between the staff and the council, and we really do appreciate it. It is a lot more work being on the Planning Commission and, and doing those things. And so it doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate your public service. So with that, Counsel A.D., anything, any legislative update?
Thank you. I don't, I just want to reiterate what Lisa has already said. The staff did a wonderful job. Thank you for the presentation from the staff. I did see Commissioner Henley and Commissioner Smith at one of the, at one of the meetings as well. So it was great to hear the feedback from the community. And I think you all have a, we will have a video up soon of the presentation, and if you want to speak to that, but that's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. There is a website specifically for the housing and infrastructure study, and we're going to have a video on it going through the same presentation that was given at all of these meetings. There's a lot of great information on that website, on the study, on the work that we're doing, on the research. And, and Greg is putting together some really cool videos with the help of the Metro Nashville Network, and so we're excited to get those posted.
We've gotten real fancy around here. Is there a motion? Seeing no other businesses, there a motion or adjourn? We're adjourned.